This is what it's all about. You know, I have kids just doing this number when they get up to the saw, you know. But after that, you know, we're good to go. Seventh grade, we jump into the Architectural CAD programs and then some individual projects. Eighth grade, we focus mainly on manufacturing. If you have any questions, anytime, just jump right in. Yeah, I'll let you guys talk about the transcribed courses.
So we offer transcribed credit courses as well at the high school, the three of us that teach here at the high school. So I currently offer woodworking, one is a transcribed credit. And those of you that don't know what transcribed credit is, they get dual credit, they get high school credit for taking it, and they get college credit through Western Technical College. And that isn't just for Western Technical, other colleges can honor that. So it gives the students a jump start at college, and it's a class that they're already taking in high school, so it's pretty convenient. I also have done construction in the past and architectural design, which is not offered by Western this year. So in the future...
You guys were here last month, so I do have to share. I congratulated the other half of the CTE department because I am incredibly proud of how much time our staff has taken to get these transcribed credits. We have, in our CSO region, we have one of the highest number of transcribed classes available to our students. And so I could not emphasize enough how exciting it is to leave our kids graduate high school with college credit under their belt. And that is a credit to you guys because the work that you have to do to allow that to be capable or possible for them is really, really, really appreciated. So the board heard that last month, I wanted you guys to hear that as well because I know that is an additional task for you guys to do.
Yeah, and I just want to add that we have to go, for each class that we offer as transcribed credit, we have to go to Western every summer or sometime during the school year, whenever they offer it, and do a training, usually an all-day training. And it's kind of interesting, sometimes we find that we're already covering most of the stuff that they're wanting us to cover. Maybe I just have to tweak things a little bit. Or we may find that we really have to change the curriculum a lot, but it's just nice to know that we're teaching at a high level for our students.
Do you have a lot of kids that are interested in getting those transcribed credits?
I find that they, you hear about them later after they graduate, you hear that they've done it. But yeah, do they, does it click with them, like, I want to do this? Like, we want them, as advisors, we're all advisors at high school. We want our students to have, you know, a plan as early as possible, but sometimes they don't know exactly if they're going to be 19 years old or so. But like, I've got a student right now that was using his credit that he got from Auto Mechanics 2, so.
One of the other things, as you know, you know, tech schools, they change things every year, so we have to kind of follow suit. So classes that we initially offered are two or three years ago, we can't offer those anymore as transcribed credits because they don't offer them anymore. So we kind of have to work with them.
Is there something extra that the students have to do in order to get the credits, or is it just like by completing the course? Is that...
They have to get, I'm assuming for yours it's the same, they have to get a B or better in the class. Otherwise, and this is why, it's a great deal for students, because if they don't get a B or better, they're dropped from the rolls. So it does not show up as, you know, a B, C, or anything like that on their transcripts. So the grade that they get is going to be a good grade if they get it. Yep.
Okay. And then after the student graduates, they request their transcript from Western Technical College, and all those classes are there, those credits transfer to most of the UW systems within the state. So it is a fantastic deal for those kids that take advantage of it.
They do have to enroll, actually. You do have to take some class time to get them to go in and enroll, which is good though, because it helps them to be in that mindset of, oh, even though I'm here in the high school building, this is a Western Technical College class as well, so. Oh, in addition to transcribed credits, we do have some classes that meet the third credit science requirement for graduation. That's that Introduction to Horticulture class, Food Science class, and Environmental Management class. Currently meet that state standard for the third credit of science. Oh, yeah, and so these are certificates. I'll let those gentlemen talk about those certificates. Mine is on the bottom, the Wisconsin Safe Operation of Tractor Machinery Certification Program. What students, you know, what's the benefit of taking that class above and beyond just looking at the world differently so that you think about safety before you do things? Students are able, between the ages of, at 12 years of age or older, with successful completion of that certificate program, are able to operate tractors on roadways in the state of Wisconsin. And with completion of the certificate program, they are able to, when they turn 14, work for somebody else in an agricultural, production agriculture. Otherwise, normally they have to wait till they're 16 to do certain tasks. But this gives them a certificate, a federal certificate, that allows them to be employed earlier than they give to their employer.
Okay, we'll just go back to the top here. Student ASC certification is something that my students in Automotive Mechanics 2 can earn. They have to take a test, it's an online test, they have to pass a certain amount of questions. I prepare them for it by taking practice tests and things like that. They do have to pay for it, and the agreement we've made is that if they pass, the school district will reimburse them for the cost of the test. That's kind of a good deal for them. They get the patch on their shoulder and a certificate and everything, so they're pretty excited if they pass. And I've had, I think, four or five students pass that now. And then the Operating Engineer Pre-Aprenticeship Certificate, so that's an online class through Destinations Career Academy. And we, Austin and I, now two years in a row, have taken students down to the local 139 Operating Engineers Training Center, that's a mouthful, down in Coloma, Wisconsin, and we're trying to get students to do this because it's a good deal for them. They can basically have all of their, if they would want to go and be an operator for heavy equipment at like Lundt or Hoffman Construction, they could have all of their safety training, the kind of, you know, bookwork side of things, done while they're in high school. And then they can kind of hit the ground running and actually get on equipment once they're graduated. So that is.
Yeah, and just to piggyback off that, we were down there at the 139 local training facility, and there were people saying, man, I wish my high school had that, young people that had just started in the program. So it's pretty cool that we are able to offer that and give them that start.
We have one student doing it this year, and we have several that want to do it next year, and we just got to make sure we make them do it.
Right. Yeah, so then I offer the Autodesk Revit Architecture Certified User Skills Exam, another mouthful. But that gives them a certification that they can use. Revit is actually a software used in the architectural world. So it gives them a heads up on, or a hand ahead, step ahead, there's a better way to say that, of other people going into architecture, but also to get a job in it, so.
So Wisconsin Energy Efficient Vehicle Association, I have a club called Super Mileage Vehicle, and students build, it's not a kit, they just build with metal that we have at school and with parts that we purchase, they build a vehicle that one person can fit in and it competes for fuel economy. And we typically go to two competitions a year, one at UW Stout, and then one at Road America in Elkhart Lake. So we compete against other schools to try to see who can get the best fuel economy. So that's the association that we're affiliated with there.
I am the advisor for Skills USA at the high school. So Skills USA is another, well, as you have it up there, CTSO. Like FFA, a lot of people are more familiar with FFA probably, but same thing, more of the TechEd version. So a lot of job skills where students go down and compete at different competitions throughout the year. And it really gives them opportunity, an opportunity to kind of experiment and experience a job. And maybe they really like it, maybe they really won't, but it's a good time for them to figure that out. And I know maybe Brian has more to add to Skills USA. Yeah.
The skills hasn't been around in Blackover, while it used to be here as a VICA 25, 30 years ago. And then we've kind of brought it back in the last few years. I think we've been chapter members for four years now. But in the middle school, we've got 22 kids involved, about, probably half of them girls, really excited. As Austin was saying, there's two kind of categories. We have leadership challenges and skilled challenges. Leadership things would be like doing interviews or presenting some sort of leadership skill that way. And then in the middle school end of things with the skilled things, we do a team engineering challenge where the kids are given an open-ended question and a bunch of, a kit of something, say, build it, make it work, that sort of thing. And they kind of like that a lot. But the kids are really, really excited about that, and I'm glad we have a strong program over at the high school now that they can go to.
And then with FFA, some similar types of things, obviously building leadership, different competitions, leadership workshops, and opportunities to serve in the community are all parts of that FFA. New this year, my officer team voted, and then our FFA chapter voted, to become an affiliated chapter. And what that means is, we pay a set amount of money to be an FFA chapter. And every student that takes an ag class in the high school is automatically an FFA member then. And so there's no dues that are collected, there's no, you know, we've removed that hurdle for students. We're working with some partners in the community to cover that extra cost. And so it's a great, great opportunity. And already, I've seen students being involved, taking advantage of some opportunities to them through the FFA that normally wouldn't have been a part of that or would have been hesitant or, you know, so it's just an awesome opportunity that we just embarked on this year. And so I'm really, really looking forward to even more students getting involved in that organization.
Are the numbers representative of the number of kids who are part of the organization?
Correct. Yep.
So as you can see, I mean, to get our programs to be successful, we've got to have our community members involved. We're not going to obviously read through all these.
Maybe point out what the list of things that we get.
Well, everything from guest speakers, field trip destinations, employment through school and work programs, equipment, donations, advice, lots of things. Brad's ag partnerships also are very, very important.
No, just putting together that list, just so you guys know, was an exercise where you go, oh my goodness, I spent a long time doing that. However, there was some advantage to that as well. It made me a little tired at first. And then, and then I realized, wow, this is really awesome when you step back and you look at the number of people that are actively engaged in helping to educate students in our community. That is just, that is great. I mean, you can live for a long time just motivated by that simple fact. Just awesome. Neat community to be in, you guys.
So just some of the funding and grants that we've been involved with in the last few years. The top two grants are grants that have helped out with our Fab Lab, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in a second. You know, we do work with our Perkins Federal Grants yearly, and then Brad's got...
The bottom ones are just within the last year kind of thing, so that's just within the last year. That's not going back any further than that for the ag ones.
Now, we do have to, you know, give a big round of applause to our school board and to help us out with the Fab Lab grants. You know, we can write them, but, you know, unless, because these are both matching grants. So some updates, I guess, building updates. Latest, the middle school's been revamped as of last summer. We renovated the engineering lab in 2016, new ag classroom in 2015, and the welding lab in 2013. So we're really pretty much up to date with a lot of our facilities. If you go around to other schools, I don't know if you've been around to other schools and take a look at them, unless, we're doing well, very well.
Yep. So again, I do want to echo a big thank you, appreciation for the support that you've given us in the TechEd department, especially last year. Jaren was the lead grant writer, we wrote that grant, a matching grant of 25,000. So we got a lot of this equipment, probably not everybody knows what it all is, but I think by looking at it, you can see it's expensive. And those are all pieces of equipment that we have, 3D printers, laser engravers, vinyl cutters, CNC mills, and plasma cutters. I could talk about those machines all day. But really, just the bottom lines, we're very fortunate to have those things to be. Industry's been telling us there's a big need for CNC manufacturing, just to get kids in CAD and to get kids in this side of things, to at least get them interested is huge. And then we have it, we have it at the high school and at the middle school as well.
And while we're talking about that, those Fab Lab grants, I just wanted to remind the board, we talked a few years ago about implementing that long-term equipment replacement cycle, which has a lot of that large pieces that you just can't pull out of a one-year budget, and certainly not out of their classroom sections. And so we were able to pair the power of that long-term equipment replacement cycle with those Fab Labs that we could maximize that matching grants when we had those opportunities. And so that really rocketed them forward on that equipment replacement list, but it's tough to go to another department when there's that matching opportunity. And so they sadly know that their time has been used for a while, and so many other departments will benefit moving forward. But that really did give us some great opportunities to have both of those moving at the same time.
Yeah, and it's cool. Other districts in the area are seeing it. We've actually been contacted by a couple districts saying, we've heard you have good things going there. What do you suggest we do as we move forward in this process? So it's been, been pretty cool to, that districts in the area are recognizing that as well. These are just some general pictures of kind of what we, the engineering lab is recently renovated, those tables were built by students, and just some quick equipment that's there.
Butcher block tables.
Yeah, yeah.
Here's the welding lab renovations back in 2013. So we have a new ventilation system. That was probably the biggest price point there. This is a new wall here. The shop used to be really open. We kind of segregated it off so that we could have a dozen different large booths for GMAW and SMAW welding. So very awesome place to teach students.
And I don't know if you were ever in the middle school classroom before, but, well, I always have my kids when we're doing our murky section, measure and find out the area. We were at 570 square feet for the classroom. And all of this here was storage in an office. And so our latest Architectural CAD class, well, find the area, now we're up to 970 some square feet. So, and these tables and everything, it's just awesome. I might even sit another five persons. We also renovated the computer lab, which was initially set up for all individual kind of teaching. But, you know, with this setup now, the kids can stand up or sit. We have some think tables up here. It just makes it a better, better used area.
And again, we've got a wide variety of different kinds of facilities that we utilize. You know, we learn in all kinds of different areas. I mean, the physical plant is a beautiful room that we've got set up. We've got a greenhouse where we've got some aquaponics, where we're raising fish and raising plants from those fish. We've got a wide variety of different hydroponic systems that we have set up. We do our learning all over the place. We've got an eight-acre test plot out by Jackson Electric Cooperative. We formed a student cooperative to run that test plot. We've got a wide variety of different hydroponic systems that we have set up. We do our learning all over the place. We've got an eight-acre test plot out by Jackson Electric Cooperative. We formed a student cooperative to run that test plot. We've got one-plus acre land lab slash pond area down by the community garden. Sorry for the slightly bitter tone in my voice. It's a beautiful facility and we're struggling the last couple of years with some water drainage issues. And so one, you know, one positive that comes from it is some of the things we were trying to do down there, we've actually relocated up next to the high school building in, in what we call the activity area. And you can see as you go around the high school there, we've got a wide variety. There's actually a ton of stuff going on in a very small area. We're working on signage is going to be our next thing within there, just so you, other people, the public can start to recognize too, what's going on. A wide variety of different types of raised beds and all kinds of different things. We, with different native plants, fruiting plants, grapevines, apple trees.
Right, I have to tell you, so you saw that the board accepts gifts at the beginning of every meeting. Almost every month, there's something for the Ag meeting area. So they are very familiar, how much is packed in there? And it took me probably four months to be able to say activity. I remember like Activia, and I have pulled it so many times at these meetings. So ironic that you should point out, there's a lot going on because sometimes we've received gifts and they're like, how much more can you put in there? There's no more room there. So we maximize that space for sure.
Yes, definitely. And it's, and it's updating it too. And, you know, and as you'll see in a little bit here, we've got, we've got some vision here. We've got some more things we want to do with that, that particular area also. So yeah, lots of great things. And then, you know, the kids, we take them out into the community a lot. You know, we've got, I know I, I take a big chunk of that field trip budget that way, but it's awesome, you know, getting the kids out into the learning area that we have in our community is very important as well. So I always include the community as part of our facilities.
So as, as we move forward and our, our main concern are the students and getting them ready. And I think, you know, as you see with some of the facility changes and the equipment and things like that, we're, we're willing to do that. We want these kids to, to have the cutting-edge stuff and, and learn from that and be ready to go out there. We're also, you know, Ryan Johnson is our school-to-work coordinator and we're working with him, you know, quite a bit to increase the school-to-work opportunities to get these kids out there. One problem in, in our areas is the insurance thing, is getting kids out into some of those areas where you have heavy equipment, you have a lot of dangerous stuff. And so it's, it's not impossible. It's just the, the people out there are like, ooh, we don't want to deal with that so much. So we're working with that. Promoting those business partnerships, continue to update and increase our facility efficiencies. Austin's got a lot of plans for in his area to try to make that more efficient. Adapting the coursework to the cutting-edge equipment that we do have. And then to open up this engineering lab to the public, we kind of were on our way with that. And then we switched gears with faculty changes and, you know, we're kind of going that way. And now Austin's with us and so that's, that's on the horizon here for us.
What are you thinking with that?
What do we think about it?
Well, what are you thinking? How are you going to do that?
How?
How to open an engineering lab?
You're obviously a big deal. So part of getting that grant is they want it to be a public space. And so it is one of the requirements, long story short. So we're working on some different, some different things and ways to get people from the community in there. It's not going to be in everyday, all-night thing, all-day thing where public is just in and out. But what it would, at least what I envision right now is a couple hours a week maybe that are open for people to come in and use the space, use the equipment. And that would be specific to the engineering lab. It wouldn't be a free-for-all of the Tech Guide area. Like it's not come bring your car in and do your brakes. It's...
Well, and Austin's working on getting some chip readers or something for on the equipment so that not anybody can just push a button and turn it on and wreck something.
Right.
Some of this equipment, if it goes a little crazy, you're going to wreck $5,000 in 10 seconds.
Yeah, we're looking into getting scanners and then offering safety training times where a person from the community could come in, this is your training time for the laser engraver. If you want to ever use that, you need to go through this training. You have a card, you scan it, and that's the only way you can get into that machine. So that we're protecting the equipment that we have. We're all, I mean, it's, it's good to make it available, but we want to make sure we're...
Well, it's our, it's kind of under our wing to take care of.
Right, right. So that's kind of a quick version of that.
A couple of visionary things for Ag education. I want to pull together a couple of my existing classes, my animal science classes and form an animal science class that'll be both transcribed and receive science credits. I'm working on that. I'd love to see some additional Ag classes, especially another level of vet science, biotechnology class, potentially renewable energies class, long-term vision. I think that would be very comprehensive for the agricultural education offerings. We've got, doing more with our farm-to-school. You know, we've been getting some lettuce from the hydroponics, been getting out onto the cafeteria salad bar area and cucumbers are real close and the tomatoes are blossoming. And it's a beautiful time in the greenhouse right now. So, and, and working on, on, you know, some more initiatives with that, Green and Healthy Schools and House Plant Activity. We've got, we want to keep improving that student cooperative that we've got formed. Really that land lab, we've got to keep trying to deal with that drainage. We're working with the land conservation department and the, the Parks and Rec Department of the city to try to work on that. We've got a high tunnel that's been started, but needs to be finished out there. We've got a storage shed that construction class is working on for us and to improve the ag area, the beekeeping area that we have. Actually, it's just, just this Saturday, I don't get many Saturdays, I got this Saturday. I got over to the farmer's market. I made a great connection with a beekeeper in the area that, that has technology that I'd love to be able to use. And so I've, I've got some good connections there to, to monitor hives and things. But anyway, I digress. Activity area, you know, adding some more things, even though I know there's a lot going on, some more stuff we want to do there, including some cranberry beds, hulliculture bed and collect the rainwater. We're not quite there yet. Increase grapes and get some new signage out there. Keep working to improve the greenhouse environment and hydroponic systems. I'd love to get some, the classroom is a great classroom. We'd love to get some absorb, sound absorbing panels on, on the teach, I guess they're all teaching and learning areas, but more of the classroom side of that a little bit. But those are just some long-term visions for Ag Ed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just like to share while you guys are all here that I am, your area lends itself so fantastically to additional leadership opportunities for our kids. And that is such an important goal, that so many of our kids have that opportunity outside the four walls of the classroom to learn leadership and follow their unique interests. But none of that comes without additional time, effort, and energy on the part of the instructors. And so we recognize that with your areas, that comes along with it. And so we really, really, really appreciate that. And Brad, when you said 27 years for your marriage and your job, as many times as I see your wife selling your sweet corn and in the concession stand Friday nights, did she know she was marrying the district as well? Or was that a surprise after the fact? I'm unsure.
Yeah, she's been throwing a few turf balls a lot.
She's incredibly tolerant of them. So thank you so very, very much. We appreciate your time.
All right. I completely recognize that. There's men that need approval because they are certified, but wanted to let you know that we hired another full-time bus driver, which is always an exciting day for Mr. Hassel. All right, so then we move on to new course proposals. Excellent. Now, that's definitely to come and speak to about those.
All right, so you saw in your...
No, I'm good.
So you saw in your packet that we have three courses being proposed at the high school. AP World History for 10th grade students as a year-long course. Sports Medicine as an elective in the Health and PE area as a semester course and for 11th and 12th graders. And then the Sustainability Course in the Science area, also an elective for a semester. So hopefully you're able to kind of see my cover letter and then each of the individual proposals with the budgets and the outlines and all of the information. Just as I kind of shared here, the wonderful part about these three courses is that they're not adding on top of already existing courses. Students would be able to take AP World History as an option instead of the World History that is required. And so that wouldn't necessarily take any additional staffing. Sports Medicine would replace a currently conducted class at the high school as well as a Sustainability Class. So that's a wonderful thing when you think about adding more options for kids. It's nice if it's able to replace something that is either not as popular or it's run its course as opposed to trying to add on top of it and we kind of run into some staffing issues. So do you have any questions or anything you'd like to talk specifically about with those courses?
I was curious about the Sports Medicine course and how that, that goes for a year or is it a semester?
A semester course.
How, and I realize you knew more students at once, but it doesn't take the place of the internships that some of the students are doing with the PE department? Or is there, I realize there's not a curriculum like that and I'm just wondering, I guess, how that fits. So the Sports Medicine would be accredited course.
Correct, correct.
What is the internship that I hear some students doing?
You're likely talking about a teacher's assistant where the kids, yeah, which is a half-accredited and the kids really just act kind of like an aide in the quarter credit program.
So there's a credit for a semester as well. So, yes, and so, yeah, teacher's assistant. So they work with a PE teacher and it's more of a support in the classroom. This Sports Medicine would have a curriculum where they would be learning lots of different units around how do you wrap injuries and how do you, but it's a concussion protocol that you go through if you were to be any kind of sports medicine. Kind of an introductory level, but they have done some consulting with our athletic trainer, Don Jacobson with the hospital, just to get some ideas, but we'd like to partner with lots of different organizations throughout, just to see what kind of Sports Medicine preparation or introduction we can give to students. Yeah, good question. When you said internships, I'm like, oh, no, we're talking about...
Sometimes I call it that, so that's why I said that.
No, no, that's sure.
Patty, you refer to the hospital internship? Like the hospital or your TA? Those are two different things.
Well, it seems like it was specific to the, the physical therapy department.
At the hospital?
I'm sorry, you said physical education, so I went to teacher's assistant. No, you're, physical therapy, that most definitely is an internship, most definitely. We have a lot more kids that would love to do that than they can handle taking at any given time. We have a lot of kids that would love to do health-related internships and the hospital's limited on the number of kids that they can, they feel like they can divide their time and help supervise. And so this would be a step in that field without needing that much involvement from the hospital.
This will also be a complement to the Health, Health Arts Academy that we are starting up as of this year as well. We have a course that improved last year, Health Sciences, that's offered for the second time this semester for students who are interested in health professions that leads into our academy, that this could be a part of.
And so we weren't going to require this Sports Medicine class to have that as a prerequisite, but that, because this could spark some interest in that and so, but we put it in the course, plan to put it in the course book pending your approval with preference given to people that have taken that Health Science Academy.
And just to clarify the credit, the internships is a credit for the semester.
So the goal then would be to kind of like an internship for more people, for more explorers, some more children, more students would have that.
It would still be onsite as opposed to getting to go to the hospital and stuff. I would imagine that they probably would be guest speakers and with Don Jacobson, you know, I would imagine they would bring in some of those people, but it would be far more focused at the high school as opposed to offsite.
Right, so those are our work-based learning co-op classes, so they do get credit for that. There is a coursework component to that as well, but then they have to log so many hours. So I believe with our co-op program, I think it's, is it 200 hours that they have to do in a semester offsite? So sometimes during the school day, but sometimes they complete their hours at another time. And so Ryan Johnson, our school-to-work coordinator, coordinates those placements as well. Related. Any other questions or discussion?
Okay, so we like to make a motion then to approve those new co-op proposals.
Make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Posed? All right, and those three courses are accepted for next year.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Sarah. Thank you. All right, Student Success Committee Report.
We meet in January, so.
Okay.
We just started.
That's short, sweet. All right, Finance and Facilities, the monthly expenditures, that was included in our board material. Certain questions, I would have you. Okay?
I make a motion to approve the monthly expenditures.
One second.
All in favor? Yes?
Yes.
Posed? All right, that's accepted. Financial Statements and Audit Report. Jill gave us a nice big...
And you can have it taken with you if you'd like and bring it back next month if you don't want to see it again.
With all your notes highlighted.
Yeah. I mean, if you truly want to look at it, certainly feel free to take it with you. But I am going to direct you to page 86 and 87. That's kind of where the rubber hits the road. It's a summary of the audit results from the auditors. Could you get there quick? We should start on 85 because that was the celebration page.
Oh, okay.
There were no audit files.
There were no audit files.
Celebration on 85 and 10.
It's a plain piece of paper for everybody.
Cut straight to the business. So a couple of the highlights in the summary of the audit results, there were no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in internal control. That's something that they look at, certainly a lot of random samples while they're here during that course of the week. And we do have, just so everybody knows, we have a lot of correspondence with them after they leave. They're here for a few days, three or four people intensely, but then there's a lot of communication that we do via email or depositing things into a secure site for them as well. So it doesn't just happen in a couple of days. It's certainly shrug out over several months in some form. There were no instances of non-compliance material to the financial statements. There were no material weaknesses to those specific kinds of things. They have to do testing for certain programs if they're over a certain dollar amount. So they usually test Title I because of the dollar amount of the program. The other things that they looked at this time are at the bottom of the page there. Impact Aid, they looked more into detail into our Common School Fund, mainly what we're purchasing with the dollars that we get, what we use to, we have to count kids and send a figure to the state. That's how we get our aid from the state on that. They look at our calculation, how we do that. Looked at our general equalization aid, looked at our per pupil aid. And another biggie that is pretty time-consuming and Tammy Cobach has spent a lot of time with them, certainly only a couple of months ago too, before this report came out, is the medical assistance, the Medicaid. And that's, that is a big one for them to audit because we do receive quite a bit of Medicaid dollars as well. They'll look at who the professionals are, working with kids that are Medicaid eligible, what kind of transportation we have, what kind of services those kids are receiving. There's just a whole bunch of reporting that goes along with getting those dollars. It's not like, yeah, we have 100 kids, give us some money. There's a whole bunch that goes with that. Special Education School Aid Parents, so that was another grant that they looked at as well. So I'm not going to read all this. The other piece is a required letter. I thought they sent enough copies for everybody, so I apologize, I didn't give everybody a copy of this, but I'll, I'll upload it, email it to you. It doesn't say a lot, which is awesome too. It just says that we didn't have any disagreements, we provided them with all the information, we used appropriate ways to estimate things like depreciation or our, our OPEB funds that we have, our liabilities that we have with pension fund for our staff as well. They were consistent and they didn't have any difficulties while they were here doing audits. So it was really awesome. That was the report. My judges are here. It often is very heavy on Jill and Tammy and Jenny's positions, but certainly special education plays a big role in that as well. And all departments end up getting pulled for bits and pieces of it. But something that I appreciate is even if the auditor will ask a question about something, Jill and Tammy are able to explain why we do things the way that we do them, which clearly meets their expectations. But then after the auditors, there's usually many, many, many conversations where they just sit and discuss, well, I wonder if we should, or I wonder if we tried this. And so it's not just we met the minimum requirements, check it done for another year, but I wonder is there a way that we could do things that it was more transparent or so that it was more efficient or so that it would align in...
so that it was more efficient or so that it would align in a way that people didn't even have to ask the next question or whatever. And so, I really appreciate the reflective nature in tackling that work because it's painful, the documents that they ask for ahead of time. I mean, it's a painful ordeal, but I really appreciate the mentality that they go into it with, is helping me get better at what we do.
And you know, we've always talked about in the business department is we, we do this all year long. It's not like the week, ooh, the audit's next week, now we gotta get ready. It's, no, we better be doing that right now for next summer. It's not something you can get ready for just before they come, so.
Is it required that we do annual audits?
Yes.
Good job, Jill.
Yeah, we're lucky. Every time we get this stuff, it's kind of, it's really comforting to know that we have somebody who really knows what they're doing to keep track of all this stuff and make sure we're doing it right.
And she's so used to doing it well that she was going to skip right over the celebration. I'm just saying, it's worth mentioning that there were no things noted, so.
Right, so what, do we just need to accept the report? Is that all we need to make a motion on?
The other thing, I would like approval of the Financial Statements and Audit Report, the actual document, if you're comfortable with that. The other thing that they did note in this letter, we did have some invoices that we didn't receive until August from Midstate regarding some bus repairs, but they were not, how did they say it? They were not significant enough to make any finding for it or anything like that, otherwise they certainly would have. But, so that was just saying, you know, how do we get those invoices more quickly? We paid them in August when we got them, but they might have been from March or April or May. And so, we had some discussions about what's a better process, how come we're not doing purchase orders for these, so we know that these invoices might be out there. And so, we're working with the bus garage and Jenny to make that a smoother process already, so.
And so, the action of the board is really to document the transparency that you've seen, you've got access to the full audit report, we're not hiding any errors or, you know, any findings, anything like that, that you've had full access to all that information and any questions that you may have. So, that's what the action is really saying, that you, it's transparent in its process and you are aware of any findings, which were none, so.
Okay. I'll raise that motion. Whatever you say.
Good news.
All right, thank you. So, all in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Very good, thank you. Thank you, thanks. All right, we received last month's meeting minutes in our packet. Is there any questions or can we go ahead and make a motion to approve that?
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes as presented.
All seconded that. All in favor?
Yes.
That's approved. District Admin Reports.
So, you're in luck since I haven't been here, it's really short. Just kidding.
Seven minutes, that's fine.
I just wanted to let you know if you were watching the postings, we recently added two new para-positions. Those are not, because somebody left, we have had more students move in and needs have increased, and so we are adding two additional special education aid positions at this point in the year. And then, as we were talking about audits, and she said that those auditors go through our Title I, we have actually been tap-tapped from the DPI to go through a full Title I audit this year, and so the volumes of paper and reports that are being generated by Steph and Tammy and Patty and Jill and myself, and just dump it all there. It's very, very, very detailed and thorough. I mean, the document of the checkboxes is, I mean, it's incredible.
Forty pages, huh?
Forty pages of everything that must be included in there, so it's just taking an exorbitant amount of time. But, we are going to pass, I am confident we're going to pass with flying colors because as we go through those forty pages or checklist, none of it has been like, oh my God, I've never even heard of that. It's like, oh yeah, okay, I might have to dig, but I could find something for that. And so, it's just not all in one place right now, but between that group, we look at everything there, so I wanted to make you aware of that. Do buildings have things you'd like to highlight, knowing that they are pressuring to be done in a few months? No, there are some things for the buildings I know they'd like to share.
I'd like to share. Get her husband doing, you know, last year we spent a lot of time working on our hands-on projects and getting, you know, the gardens going, because I'm sure people as they drove by wondered what the heck we were doing out there with like one flower growing and it looked a little strange, but we have, at the start of the year, we harvested close to 500 potatoes and then we started doing some things with the food pantry, and this year we've been able to continue to do some of those things, but hit more heavy on some of the academics and the behavior issues, and I should probably not say this, but have been so minimal for us that we've been able to really, really work on academics and some of the other areas, so it is just, we've done it so well.
That doesn't happen accidentally, Tammy. That is in large part due to your leadership over in that building.
Well, and we've got the same for the staff, but the kids are doing so well and are enjoying out on field trip, and it's just we've been able to do so many neat things and, you know, because they donated all of those, I call them merit ties, I'm sure they called something else, but, you know, it gave us some great opportunities and the committee has some great sense, so I appreciate everything.
Any other buildings?
Yeah, go ahead, Lauren.
Hey, I was just going to talk about some of the holiday events, the celebrating that's been happening. We've had half of our amazing Christmas concerts last Thursday night with Mrs. Coles, and so we had second grade and half of our fourth and fifth grade with our new schedule. Stephanie teaches half the kids and Jody teaches half the kids, so this Thursday, it's our third graders with a combination of Jody and Stephanie doing that concert, and then Jody will have her four or five concert. So, I don't know about doing this the last week of school, but it's going to be awesome. She always impresses. Last Thursday, we had so many wonderful comments, the concert was truly amazing. So, if you would like to join us Thursday night, 6:30 is third grade and 7:30 is our four or five. It'll be amazing. Kids of ours have been working on door decorating, so Jill and Steph, I think they're going to come on over and do some judging. Christmas in the kitchen, so Lee Amborn cut out Christmas trees for every classroom. Their challenge is to decorate it, and we hung them all in the cafeteria, so that looks gorgeous out those windows. And they're also going to win prizes for the best decorating. Thursday is our Christmas holiday lunch, and so this has been a tradition for years where the kids come in, grab their milk and sit down, and then all the adults in the school go through and grab two trays and serve the students, so they think that's pretty special. So, that'll be fun with Christmas music and ugly sweater contest from the staff. And Project Christmas, so our goal, Red Creek's challenge is to collect mac and cheese. So, their challenge was to collect 1,200 boxes. So, we surpassed that like a week before the deadline. So, I challenged them to hit the fifty. Well, so that was for a PJ hot chocolate party, so they earned that with a week to go. So, I said, give me 1,500 and we'll add some candy canes, which I was already going to do, but hopefully they're not watching. I'm sorry.
Your kids are watching the recording.
I'm sorry. So, they did 1,732 boxes, so they really have fun with that. And then our staff have been playing as well. So, tonight, we survived a Christmas story escape room in Kristy Rouch's room. It was hard, too. We, yeah, could have used some extra help here. Admins have practiced with that. We also had holiday snacks in the lounge. Secret Santa's going on all week and our staff might be enjoying a week of jeans. So, that might have spread throughout the district. Shelly's on.
Sorry, Shelly, I can't help it.
I'm probably out of my pajamas, I'm good.
For your jeans, we're going to be happy.
I mean, real clothes, not pajamas.
I'll jump in. So, one thing that I'm excited to share about is the Principal's 200 Club that was started at Forest Street. So, outside my office, in the main part of the office, I've got a board with 200 squares in it, and each day I select a staff member to go and give out five tickets. They're special tickets that are addressing a specific behavior that we want to see more of in the school. So, we've given out some tickets for playing nicely out on the playground with their friends, putting their stuff away when they come back inside, using walking feet or quiet voices in the school. And so, when a child gets noticed with a ticket, they get to come to the office right away, they draw a number, and then their ticket goes in that numbered spot, and it's like a big game of bingo after that. So, that roller column that fills up first, they get to, all the kids in that roller column get to choose a mystery motivator. They don't know what it is because it's sealed in an envelope. But it's a great way to get some good phone calls home to parents for the kids and for the parents, so it's not always a bad home call. And the kids get to take home a certificate too, so it's going to be a fantastic.
In middle school, at the end of every month, we do what is called a drawing for a golden ticket prize, so kids can amass their tiger tickets. They get 10 tiger tickets and they can turn that in to get one golden ticket from their teacher. The golden ticket goes into the bucket in the office, and then from that pile, we draw out one name and the student wins prizes up to $50. And a lot of times we'll have a pass to Bruce Mound, or maybe it'll be a movie scene with popcorn and a blanket and a movie pass, or maybe we've had a sports package where they can win a football jersey and stuff like that. But a staff member came up with a really unique idea for this past month's golden ticket drawing, and that $50, the student whose name is drawn gets to pick a friend to go out to lunch somewhere in town, so those two go out to lunch, and then they take $50 and they go to Walmart and they go on a shopping spree for a family selected from Project Christmas for which to buy gifts and toys. And it was really cool because, of course, the names are anonymous, the family, but they get to know it's a family of five and they have three little kids, and they give the ages. And then, so these two big eighth-grade boys that happened to be, went to Walmart, they were picking out dolls and they were picking out diapers, and we had aid, the sports staff and Holka went along with them. But it was really neat and they felt really, really good about using that money to give something back to our community. So, really neat way to use that golden ticket prize.
I loved that one. I saw it on Facebook, that was a really neat idea.
So, a lot going on at high schools as well. We had the medical dinner, and first for our new choir teacher, did a fantastic job, and she also has a choir concert at the middle school, and I've heard really good things about that. Today, I did a classroom observation of Mrs. Walker and followed the chamber choir over to Pine View where they presented Christmas carols to the residents over there, and was really, really well received and did a fantastic job. So, the music department is doing really well this year, and we also had the Empty Bowls event before the middle school music concert, and I just signed the purchase order to donate $2,100 to Project Christmas for the, from our food pantry from the empty bowls project. So, that, their goal was 2,000, and they meant it, and then a little bit extra, so that's been good. Otherwise, we're trying to keep things moving forward and keep kids focused, 14 days of school before finals when they get back from the break, so we're reminding them that after the break is their push, so.
As a former music teacher, I thought you were going to say I wanted to do a classroom visit, and she was curled up sleeping because December is a tough month to be a new music teacher, that's for darn sure. It's great.
They deserve a break.
Okay, so we have WASB and there's the resolutions, and we got that in our board material to read over, so I don't know if there's any questions or concerns about any of those. Typically, the person who goes and represents our district votes as they wish to. Yes, I'm looking at you, Scott, because you said you would.
And so, we haven't put it as an action item before, it's been more of a discussion because the idea has been in the past that if they're wanting the representative, whoever it may be that year, to go and vote how they feel best represents the board and the community. And so, what we've done at these meetings is, are there any that stand out to you as having concerns over, or any that you have a strong opinion about that you would want to make sure Scott knew before he went in? It's not like we take actions, say we approve all of these, and so, go forth. It's just more of a informing Scott of where everyone else lies in those discussions, so. Does anyone have any resolutions you'd like to pull out?
I had a couple.
Okay.
The 19.03 and then 19.04, for sure. This was a lot to read through.
Yes, it was, yes it was. And so, we will have our January board meeting before the meeting as well, so it's not like this is the only time we can take a look at it, so.
I was hoping for that.
Yes.
So, three and four.
So, three, student poverty. The WASB supports using student poverty as a factor in the state equalization aid formula revenue limits. Currently, both the equalization aid formula, AKA school funding formula, uses to calculate each district's generalization, equalization aid allocation, and the revenue limit formula count each pupil as one pupil without regard to any special needs or characteristics that pupil may possess. They support using a student poverty as a factor in how we state aid, specifically in general equalization aid being calculated and distributed to each school district through the school funding formula. The resolution would add student poverty as a factor in calculating the revenue limit applicable to each school district. So, trying to stop every student is equal, whether you live in a community that spends $14,000 per student or $9,000 per student, is what they're trying to address.
So, the question I had about that was, I think the state equalization already does that.
Nope, not enough funding a student, no, no.
Sorry.
No, please, go ahead.
The funding formula is more based on property value per member.
So, doesn't property value reflect somewhat the economic environment of the district?
There's a lot of districts that are property wealthy that, like, I'm thinking of some districts who own near water that have...
Say Hayward.
Yeah, Hayward is a great example, that there is a lot of very expensive property there, but not necessarily the residents who attend that school, because the people who own the property are from Illinois and don't have kids that go to school there. So, some districts can look incredibly property wealthy and their students, their actual families that reside there could have a very high rate of poverty, so they are not always equal. Monaco is another area that jumps to mind.
Right, so, but on those properties, the taxes would be higher, right?
But their revenue limit isn't any different, so that just means that more of their state funding would come from the local property tax perhaps, but it does not mean that they have any additional dollars as a district to spend on their students. Because if it's not affecting the revenue limit, it's a finite dollar amount, it's just whether it's coming from state aid or from local property tax, they're talking about allowing that to affect the revenue limit so that they could reap the benefits, I guess, of some of those higher taxes and be able to apply those. So, the revenue limit and how it is being funded are two very, very different things. So, if it's not impacting the revenue limit, I don't care how wealthy you are, you still only get X number of dollars to educate your kids. Just comes from either state aid or local property tax.
So, in like a Hayward district, more of their money would come from local property taxes, is that interesting? Because the property values are higher there?
It depends, likely. It depends though how many kids they have and how their equalized value per member ranks in the state where they fall.
So, how would they measure poverty in this resolution?
My guess is that they would take, we report that very regularly to the Department of Public Instruction based off of the federal poverty rate is what it boils down to. And so, as a district, this year, our district averages 52% of our students are below the federal poverty limit.
63, shut up.
As a district, yeah, yeah, yeah. As a district, it's 52, and that is of those that choose to fill out the free and reduced price lunch form.
So, it's based on the lunch thing, I mean?
They use it for other things like our Title I funding, they use free and reduced lunch.
So, how accurate do you think that is?
Well, I think it's very telling that when you look at it, and I think this is where you're headed, at the elementary level, we have a building at 63% this year, but our district-wide average is 52. Well, we know those are the same families that attend K-12, but at the secondary level, families are far more hesitant to fill out the form than they are at the elementary level. And so, if our highest level is 63, we have to assume that our district average, if all, you know, if there was a way to do it without them filling out the form, we would have to be closer to that 60%. So, our district average this year is 52.
So, this resolution would help a district like us?
Yes.
Great. Do you look when you're, when you're, when they fill out the forms, do you have a complex, and how do you know that that's...
There's a federal form that comes to each district each year, and it is a formula that Joey processes those forms and gets back to them. There is zero personal, oh, I really think this is, or oh, I, I mean, there is a chart that says if you have this many people living there and your gross combined income is this, and so it's really not an interpretation kind of thing.
You're right, Patty, though, they're filling it out.
Yes, the parents, yes.
There is, so there's two things. We also have direct certification that if they're on... We also have direct certification that if they're on a number of programs, those come right to us. They don't even have to fill out a form. That's directly certified. There's others that do fill out a form. We have, we have to do a random audit, but the computer picks nine applications. We have to ask them then for those documents to prove that this is, you know, what your adjusted gross income was last year or any of your check stuff to show that this and those kinds of things. So there is a process that they're audited throughout the year as well.
Part of the other reason I think that the elementary is always so much higher, the secretaries get to know the families more at the younger age because they're with them longer and they just, it just is the way it is at the elementary level. And so I know the secretaries, well, at times if they know one of the parents loses a job, they will send home that form mid-year. And I'm not saying middle school and high school don't do that. There just is, you know, a different level of involvement at the younger level. And so families are just much more willing to fill it out. I think at the secondary level, the kid won't even bring the form home. We even send it electronically now so that all parents have access to it and so forth. But it's very common that the elementary is heavier than...
Some they don't know when they're filling out a form, they don't know what the threshold is that they have to meet at that set and they don't know that. We know that when we're processing them, but families don't know what that threshold is. So and it is, I know what it is and it's pretty low for a family of four. It's really, I mean, it's just hard to believe that that's what people could function on too. So the other thing I wanted to say, so I mean, it's interesting, our rate has gone up, that free and reduce rate. I mean, there were years where forty-five percent was our district-wide average. Now being sixty-three and like Dr. Sieberson said, you know, the high school's not at forty-two and Red Creek's at sixty-three. I mean, they're just not filling out as many applications or whatever. So our district average likely is higher than that either, so.
So if that helps you understand a little bit?
I just wondered, it seems to me whenever something is added, then we have a lot more bookwork and a lot more complicated ways.
That's something the state already collects. I mean, they already know our exact number of free and reduces. They know all of that data already. And I'm going to say the computer probably pulling it and making it happen. So, yeah. And then ten-four, you also had a question about community schools?
Yeah, it was kind of the same sort of thing. Is, so are we a community school, I guess? Or what is the criteria that is combined epidemic, physical health, mental health, and social services, and we do all that? So how are they going to define who is a community school and who isn't?
I remember when we had one of our regional meetings in La Crosse and they had a health clinic right in the school. It had its own private entrance. Parents and students could come there. I think they had after hours, they had after-school hours so that they could...
So are they asking for increased, another pool of money to fund these schools? I really wasn't clear anymore.
It's very vague. I agree because I know exactly the clinic that you're talking about when we were down there, but I don't know that I would define that as a community school. It almost feels like a, I'm...
It was just messy and I...
I agree. There needs to be a lot more clarity is what I would say. But that is definitely what they're talking about is they want some state funding for inclusive community schools programming. And so the fact that they have programming over it implies to me that there would become a dollar amount that if you do a clinic, then there's, you know, I agree, it lacks some clarity in there for sure.
I mean, I wish it isn't a perfect world, but it seems like sometimes we are funding so much more than education.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Sometimes it's expensive education.
Is there any more that you would like to talk about? We can certainly put it on the agenda again for the January meeting so that it's a touch in time.
There was a lot to read there.
Yes, there definitely was. Okay. Then any conference workshop attendance for future agenda items? I had one agenda item as we were listening tonight and the questions asked. I think it would be interesting for you guys to see, how many students do we have on a work-based learning placements for first semester and second semester? Not necessarily the students, but the numbers and where those placements are, just that you have some idea of that huge list of community partners, which ones are hosing our students in charge. So I added that into the resolutions. Yes. Oh, that's right. I thought you were going to be doing during the building, the district admin report. I apologize. I apologize. We moved on quickly. Thank you.
No, that's okay. I looked up still like, ooh. So I don't know if you got a chance to read the letter from the High School Social Studies Department, but then I also drafted this letter just as a possible, you wouldn't have to use it, but the High School Social Studies Department is wanting to share their support for the second bill thirty-four and was asking for your support as well. And so just kind of looking through there, the letter that they proposed or that they shared with you, kind of explains the bill is really to add the requirement that the teaching of history, to add to the already required to teach state, national, and world history, to include the role that the mom played in our kind of local history. And so there are three parts, their involvement in the Vietnam War, their persecution after the Vietnam War, and then their reasons for immigrating to the United States. And their support, our local social studies department's local support for this, including this, just because it is very relevant to our area, that our state has the third highest population in the country, so after Palm Springs and Minnesota. So again, it's of course up to you, but they just wanted to share their support and ask that you could use this letter if you wish.
I missed the bill somewhere.
Yeah, I'm looking for it.
So if you scroll over to the next page.
It was in your...
It probably wasn't there.
Yes, right under their letter. So I don't think it's necessarily something that you have to take action as a full board, but if you wanted to, you certainly could. Or if you wanted to contact your legislators and use that letter, you could do that as well.
There have been very few occasions, but a couple of times when the board has all agreed on a level of advocacy and then a letter that is, Stephanie's already drafted one for you.
I just took the liberty to do that.
And so if the board is interested, that can be signed from all of you. If that's not something all of you are interested in doing, you can certainly use such templates or whatever. Any questions?
So are you looking, kind of looking for us to send our support as a board or enact as a board on that or...
It looks to me like that's what the Social Studies Department was originally requesting of you as they shared it with the board formally. And so Stephanie and I had some conversation, like, what's the best way for this to happen? Does the Social Studies Department come and talk to you or we decided that Stephanie just sharing the information with you would...
I guess I think that this is already being done here because I read through some of the, some of the textbooks that we have. So I'm not sure that, it just seems like we make all of these requirements and requirements have requirements instead of leading it up to the local school districts to do what they feel is best for their own. And I guess I don't know that we need a state legislative act to simply go to do that. That's my opinion.
And you're right, in our local district, we have chosen to make it part of our curriculum. We kind of have felt that it falls under Act Thirty-One, which talks about, that was kind of in their letter as well, understanding different cultures and value systems. The Act Thirty-One law calls out American, Indian, African-American, and Hispanic, but we have tried to infuse any area that it makes sense to into our curriculum. But this bill kind of points to...
If we wanted to approve of this as a board, wouldn't this need to be an action item on our agenda?
And so as Stephanie shared it with you, if there was a consensus for the whole group, we would draft something for next month. We already know that there's not a consensus by the whole group, so I kind of feel like you all have the information, do with it what you would like. That's the way I think.
Absolutely.
When are they taking action on this bill?
I don't know that.
They're done for this year.
They're done?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Stephanie.
So we would send this as an individual approval.
Any questions for January fourth meeting?
I think so.
Okay.
All right, we'd like to move to adjourn the meeting.
I will. Will do.
All right, approve? Yes?
Yes, yes.
All right. Yes, all in favor? That's what I meant to imply by that.
Are we in?
We're in.
All right. I assume there's no opposed opposition to that? Would you like to say so? All right, then that is approved and we are adjourned.